Seeing quorum, the chair opens up the Mashpee Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, 7:00 PM, here at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I'd like to welcome everybody, remind everybody that we're being video graphed and recorded. And if you have the opportunity to address the board, please do so at the microphone, so that our viewers at home can hear you. I'd like to invite everybody to stand and recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, hi Sam. I'd like to introduce our new town planner, Evan Laird. Am I saying that right?
Evan.
Evan, sorry.
Last name is pretty good. Laird.
Laird.
Mangels that.
And I just, I asked him, I talked to him before, and I asked him if he wouldn't spend a few minutes about telling us about himself, his experience and his education.
Certainly. Okay to stay at the table?
Yeah.
Would you like me at the microphone? So, really wonderful to be in Mashpee. I grew up in Sandwich, so not too far, just right down the road. I did my, I went to high school at Tabor Academy and subsequently went on to study political science and French in Ithaca College. Interestingly enough, worked at breweries for a few years before pursuing my graduate degree at Brown University, where I got a Master of Public Affairs. My journey to planning was kind of an interesting one. I've always been drawn to public service and knew I was going to at least, my career would be altruistic in nature. And I had the opportunity to work on a project in Quito, Ecuador, when I was in my second year at Brown, pursuing my graduate degree, that looked at a large parcel of land adjacent to their international airport. And this parcel of land was a tax preference zone, and they were, federal law mandated that it could only be one of three uses, so we looked at the economy, economic competitiveness, and tried to identify how to best use that parcel. And that's when I realized that a lot of the places we live in the United States simply don't function well, and if I wanted to have impact across a lot of, or at least have positive outcomes along a broad spectrum of areas, that we needed to plan better places that were accommodating people better. So, I started focusing my education at Brown more so on planning and urban design, which led me to the Pawtucket Foundation in Pawtucket, which is a nonprofit that provides research capacity and, you know, grant making to the city of Pawtucket to improve community, does community and economic development work, and subsequently landed a position as Principal Planner in the city of Central Falls, where I was the CDBG Administrator, and worked on managing the, you know, budget of about 500 annual, $500,000 annual dollars in economic development and community development work, working on streetscape improvements, commercial area improvements, affordable housing, and a variety of historical preservation. I worked on their report that expanded the historic district in Central Falls. And from Central Falls, I ended up going to Brookline, Mass, where I was Economic Development and Long-Term Planner, primarily working in the commercial districts to improve the vibrancy of commercial areas, looking at potential zoning changes to, not necessarily entice developers, but, you know, bring economic development activity to areas that were high market value in terms of real estate, and identifying problems and bringing solutions to those using the planning tools we have at hand, which is essentially zoning. And from there, I ended up here in Mashpee, which I couldn't be happier to be in. Again, I grew up in Sandwich, and it's really a pleasure to be in a place that I really true, I care truly deeply for, and I care about the future of this place, and I'm just really excited for the opportunity to put my two cents in. So, thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak today, and I look forward to working with the Mashpee community.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. So, next item is approval of minutes from February 7th, 2017. I'd accept a motion to accept as presented.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written for February 7th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Stay.
Okay. The next item is definitive subdivision plan for Evergreen Energy, 588 Main Street, Sessors Map, 19 Block 10. The request is a signature definitive subdivision plan for 12-lot industrial commercial subdivision. It was approved November 15th, 2017. So, the covenants has been provided. And Charlie, I don't know if you saw that, the covenant? Has the right, has the right date of everything. So, I'm signing them.
Yep.
What I can do is I continue, I can continue to sign them after the meeting's over. Because we've all signed them, I've dated them being signed today. I don't know if you've signed them.
Evergreen, that's the one I came in.
Oh, you did?
That's the day I came in, right?
All right. So, let me just check the MyLine and make sure everybody's signature's on it before everybody leaves. So, next one is special permit knockabout beer company, 13 Lake Avenue, Mashpee, Sessors Map 27 Block 46. The request is approval of performance bond for site work and landscaping. And I can see Charlie. Hi Charlie. Charlie's reading it.
Does everybody have a copy? Because there's a whole bunch of them.
I don't know if anybody wants to look at them. I think we're fine, as long as the amount is right. Yeah, I looked at it before.
Oh, okay.
Is the amount, the correct amount?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yep. And, let's see.
Because I don't know if I...
Peter with Knockabout.
Hi Peter.
Hello. I think it's 45,000. I think actually the number was like 44, 600, or something like that, but we just put it at 45,000.
Okay.
It's 150% of the number that was approved by you guys when we met many moons ago. So, I believe that number was 44-something, but we just did 45,000.
Okay. That sounds about right.
And this has been worked on with Terry at the manager's office and the insurance representative that I've been working with, to make sure that council and everyone else has a chance to review this before tonight, so.
Yeah, Terry Cook in the town manager's office, worked on it with town council.
Sometimes he's hard to collect on, I hear it, though, the way they're set up.
I haven't had a chance really to...
But if the towns accept it and they've worked it out, I'm fine with it then.
It does say, and it's held firmly bound unto the town of Mashpee, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I've seen charities from that company before.
All right.
Yeah.
There's only a few of them, I guess, that do it in the country, just, so they're one of the...
Usually with construction.
The other ways who...
Yeah.
We have them also for our liquor liability and stuff like that, we have to get them.
The town manager and the county, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
And we started working on this when you guys called me, I think on the 7th, we were checking in on it, they were already kind of working on it at that point, so the last two weeks here, they've been getting that all taken care of, back and forth to council and whatnot.
So, is, are you comfortable making a motion to accept it?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Give Charlie one more minute.
All right.
The next steps on that are going to be...
It's evidently good until February 15th, 2019, so that gives Peter roughly a year to get the work done.
All right.
But it does say that if you don't take care of it by then, it says the power of attorney shall expire and terminate, so we need to be sure that this doesn't pass and then all of a sudden one disappears.
Yeah, that's the thing with...
So, it means that somebody's going to have to keep a tab on it.
Make sure you have that work done within a year.
Make sure nothing expires.
Or, yeah, our plan is to get it done within a year, for sure, and for some crazy reason, if that's not the case, we can renew the bond, but that would not be the plan. The plan is to get the work done. Our plan is before the summer.
But we want to make sure, like if the year's coming up, a month before it runs out, he comes in front of us.
Is it something the planning department can track?
We would probably delegate enforcement to that, but I can certainly work with Peter to make sure that the work is being done, and if, we're seeing that he's not following the scope of the work on a specific schedule, he could probably come back before the planning board and discuss options.
We up it, you know, but I'm sure you want to get it done, like you said, to have the people...
We want to have it for the summer, so that's our goal.
Maybe, as just as a recommendation, that the planning board vote to ask Peter to come back, say, within the next three months?
And see where it goes.
Give us an update as to what's been done, how much further it looks like it would take to complete the work, just so that we keep him in front of you.
Yeah.
So that you've got an update, so we don't get to the last minute and all of a sudden...
Right, and we're scrambling like that.
Yeah, that's fine. We can pick the date on, you know, that three months from now, whenever that meeting is, and we can put us on the agenda, and I'll be here for that.
Where's our calendar?
Say the first, say the first meeting in June.
June, okay, first meeting in June.
It's first.
If we come back to what's that?
No problem at all.
It's appropriate.
Okay. So...
Make a motion that Peter comes back, the first meeting in June, which is the 6th.
June 6th.
6th, that's 7, 10.
6, 10. 7 or...
June 6th.
6, 6.
D-Day.
Oh, is it?
Oh.
Yeah, D-Day. I understand you had a fire.
We did, we had a small issue with our, one of our venting pipes. That was, there was some issue with the way it was, you know, installed. There was no actual any flame or anything like that. It was just an issue of misinstalled piping and some smoldering that our brewer caught, and the fire department came, and they were able to remove basically a two-foot section out of the roof, not even do any damage, no structural anything, it was just moving some shingles. So, it was really great work by the chief and his crew over there to come in and get it out of there, and we've been working with the building department and the fire department to, you know, get that repaired correctly, and get them to review what's being done to correct the issue, so it doesn't happen again. So, they've been basically doing that for the last, you know, 10 days, essentially. And so, they were, the inspectors were over there today, looking at them doing stuff, and so we're keeping very close contact with the building department and fire department to make sure that they know what's happening on a, you know, ongoing basis, so that we can get them to sign off when the, all the corrections have been made, so that doesn't happen again.
You were lucky then.
Yeah, we were very lucky. I mean, it could have been, if we had gone home for the day and not noticed it, it would have been burnt down, the fire chief said. So, it's one of those things where it was very, like a smolder, there was no flames at all, and he just smelled it, and then we ended up, you know, getting the smoke, and then we called right away. It was before there was even like a big gathering of smoke or anything.
The contractor put it in wrong, or the...
You know, I'm not exactly sure exactly where it is, but there was some mix-up with the way that was coming through the roof.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're fixing it, and they had a big meeting, our contractor, and with the fire commissioner and the building department and everything last week, to kind of go over the plan of attack, and everyone seems to be on the same page for what needs to happen and how it needs to be repaired, because obviously that's the last thing we wanted, you know, spending all this time and energy to get the place looking good and feeling good, and so, we're just glad it wasn't worse, and no one was hurt, and so, before anyone showed up from the customer front.
So, I'd entertain a motion to approve the performance bond as approved by town council?
So be it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And we'll see you June 6th?
That's great. Thank you. And then I did, I just... Just so you have the as-built.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So, does the as-built also go to the building department?
This is just the location of utilities. It really isn't anything to do with the building.
Okay. So, that's what we do.
You have a copy of it, just because underground, anything that we've done, most of it stayed the same. We just ran the new gas line that came up, it's showing on there, the water line stayed the same, and then we just ran utilities from the pole underground.
So, Jen, can you note that he passed in an as-built to the helping engineer and the planning department?
And I have digital copies of all the stuff, as well as the bonds and everything, so any department or anybody needs additional copies, we can run them off or give you guys digital copies.
I'll certainly maintain digital copies of everything I start receiving for cases, and if the planning board should require them, just notify Maria or myself in the planning department, and I'll make sure you get a copy.
Great.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, folks. I'll see you, hopefully before June 6th.
So, please, right, so drop us an email for your grand opening, and I'm sure we'll all be there.
Once we can start pouring beer, then we'll know when we can open.
Okay.
Then we can start that next week, and then we can really say, oh, this state beer will be ready to be consumed.
That's awesome. Yay!
Thank you, Peter.
Hey, good luck.
Okay, new business, we have a draft of our annual report that we're still working on. I'm going to have David Koherian work a little bit on that paragraph about Tom. I remember I had you all send me your comments by email, I'll forward them to David, and he can draft up something. And our new town planner is going to edit it for us.
It's minor, thanks.
So, that's where that is. And under new business, Dennis had an item that we'll have to take a roll call vote to put it on the agenda, but what was the...
The thing was that Pemblico Pond Road and Katuut...
So, I'd accept a motion to put this on the agenda?
I'd put this on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And by roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so go ahead.
Remember, he couldn't meet those requirements, 150 feet, and he was there, switched that little piece of land.
Right, we're talking about the corner of Pemblico and Katuut Road.
Katuut Road, yeah.
Yeah.
And then he came here, and we signed it off, and stuff. Now, you've got a builder permit, and last week, the lady that owned that property said she never gave permission, and how did he ever get a permit to build this thing? And they were asking me, and I'm there, well, he came and told us that he had a, you know, permit, the permission, and he had it stamped from an engineer. So, I goes, all we did is signed off, and it's not a buildable lot, we just had him at the requirement, once he'd switched that land.
Right.
But, I don't know, didn't Maria call you? She was at the...
Maria called me, she emailed me, I also had a call from Mike Mendoza.
Yeah, that's Mike, wanted to talk to you.
And we talked about it at length today.
Wait a minute, John, because I said, it was you, Mike, you gave him the permit to build on that.
Well, what you did really was to endorse an approval-not-required plan.
Right.
All that said essentially was that as a planning board, you have no issue with what's being presented. In other words, you declared it wasn't a subdivision that required a public hearing or anything.
Right.
You simply said, well, in terms of it being an A&R plan, we give an endorsement that we really don't care about it in terms of the frontage and so forth. You made the determination as to what the frontage would be. You put a statement on the plan that said that, I think it was Lot 14A, was to be combined with 14 as a buildable lot. Well, your action in no way transfers that property from one owner to another.
All right.
Okay.
That's what I told him.
It does not.
I didn't explain it like you did, but I tried to say, all we did is looked at the 150 feet.
Yeah. That takes a deed from whoever the complainant is to the person who now has the building permit. If that never took place, then there may be some issues with that. But in talking with Mike Mendoza today, I suggested that perhaps he could call the owner of the property who has the building permit and ask him to give him a copy of the deed, let him see the deed for the transfer. If the transfer never took place, then there may be a violation, but I haven't seen any documentation or anything, but there is nothing that you do here that transfers property from one owner to another. That takes a transaction where the property owner signs a deed over, and says, I grant to so-and-so X number of square feet, a lot 14A, however the language is written, signs it and gets recorded in the Bronx Register Deeds. That's the only time when the land transfer takes place. Once that's done, and it's in the new owner's hands, then it's considered a part and parcel of it. Whether it becomes a, one parcel of land, 14 and 14A together, is another issue, because as I remember it, the land that you were dealing with was registered with the land court.
Yeah.
And you really can't combine an unregistered piece of land with registered land unless you go through a tremendous procedure. But for building purposes, if, so long as it's shown that he owns it, it could be considered part of the area for building purposes.
Okay.
So, I think Mike was concerned that maybe your actions here did something to take away a piece of land from one person and give it to another.
And I said, no.
That's not the way that works.
That's what I told him, but I didn't explain it like our Charlie did, but I said, we're just looking at, we're not giving him no permission to do anything, when they're saying he meets the standards of 150 feet frontage on a road, and by getting that little piece of land, they could get 150 feet.
Right.
And I goes, it was up to him and the other property owner to make a commitment.
That's right.
And stuff.
All that does is, it puts on a piece of paper what the conveyance would be.
Yeah.
And then, an attorney would draw up a deed that would perhaps describe it in terms of a reference to the plan, or it might have what they call a meets and bounds description, which X number of degrees, minutes, and seconds, 100 feet this way, 75 feet that way, whatever it is, that gets incorporated into the deed which the owner of the property would sign. And then she hands it over to the new owner in exchange for whatever payment was to be made, and then it gets recorded in the registry.
So, it has to be recorded after all that?
Yes.
So, they met, the one that I signed, the plan that I signed, and it had the stamp on it from the engineer.
That, that should have been recorded, and you would think that...
I said that, I said, I think this is supposed to be recorded.
Sure, and you would think that they would take that plan along with the deed and record it at the same time at the registry.
No. Then, what I said at the end, I goes, this seems to me to be in the lawyer's hands now.
Yeah.
And goes, it's not in the planning board, we just did what we were, but the state law requires us to do, you know? And goes, this, this lawyer's stuff now.
That's right. It's almost like we can't deny.
Yeah, we can't, you can't deny if he meets that, and we're not there to say, is this your, you know, and he kind of said, he got permission, I thought, and maybe he was talking to the owner, and I thought he said he got...
But we don't need to see a PNS before we enact...
No, I looked at the Form A application that you have here, and it does say there's a place for the applicant to sign, and then there's also a place for the owner to sign. Now, that may be the owner of the property that being subdivided.
Yeah.
Or in this particular case, if there's a third party involved, it would be a good thing to have them sign also, so that you know that they're aware of what's going on. But nevertheless, your action here in no way forces anybody to do anything.
Right.
Because all it is is drawing a picture, and you're saying it's not a subdivision, so we don't have to hold a public hearing, we don't have to notify a butters, we don't have to go through the hearing process.
Because you're confirming access.
Yeah, but...
So, you comfortable with that, Dennis?
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought, too. So, the building department, they gave out a permit, so they must have thought that thing was already registered with the, you know, the registry of deeds and stuff?
It could be. I'm not familiar enough with their process of how they review things to know.
Yeah.
But I did suggest to Mike today that, you know, to verify whether or not it took place, ask the person who pulled the permit if he got a deed for this parcel.
Because I didn't know who Mike was, and I said twice, you know, this is the builders' department, who's really in charge, it's out of our hands now.
Yeah.
I goes, this is the building department, he didn't say anything, and then I said it about 15 minutes later, but I was thinking about that, really, this is the building department. Then when I walked out, I realized, I said, oh, that's the building inspector, you know, he's the one, you know, but it is, it's, we have nothing to do with this now.
No, and if, if this individual who is claiming that nothing ever transpired, if that is the truth, then there are some issues that need to be dealt with.
Yeah.
Either get the conveyance, or something else will have to happen. But I haven't seen the plan, I know the plan you're referring to, I know that they had it in the building inspector's office today.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen it again, but just reflecting back, and I went back and I found the minutes of May 17th, I believe it was, which the vote was taken.
Right.
And it was simply to make a note on the plan that 14A and 14 would be combined as one, considered as a single lot.
I believe I've included the plans for that, the property in discussion over here, so you're welcome to review it after the meeting, or...
No, I'm fine with all of it.
Well, thank you for dealing with that, Dennis.
Oh, yeah.
And Charlie, that was, yeah.
And when I saw my name on them, they go, oh, see, because it's so me, too, because I signed this thing, you know? Because I got through before, because they signed, you know, I mean, not that they happened, but...
Yeah, is the, I wonder, did you pull the Form A?
Maria compiled some documents that, for Mr. Rowley, so I'm not 100% certain which document is there.
If it's signed by the applicant, it's signed by the applicant, you know? So, next thing, Mashpee Commons update, so you can take one of these. Mashpee Commons is starting a series of Tuesday talks. Sam, I'm sure that you received something from them. So, starting Tuesday, March 6th, at 6:00 PM, at Mashpee Common, 17 Market Street, there will be a talk about housing on the Cape. The next one is Tuesday, March 13th, at 6:00 PM, at the Mashpee Public Library, about infrastructure, public space, and systems. The next Tuesday is March 27th, 6:00 PM, creating a stable economic base for Mashpee, that's going to be really interesting. And the fourth one, it skips to Tuesday, April 10th, at 6:00 PM, at Mashpee Public Library. So, these are all hosted by Mashpee Commons, it's their Mashpee Commons by Design initiative. They have open houses starting at 5:00 before each of the talks, so I encourage everybody to go. And I'm wondering if we can get that on the website?
Absolutely. I would also just like to second Mary's encouragement for planning board members to attend, these are going to be important visioning sessions, you know, with community members and with Mashpee Commons team to start guiding the vision for future development of that project, so please attend, your opinions are valuable.
Yeah, get all your friends and family, too.
Yeah.
Right, Joe? All right, so that's Mashpee Commons update. So, all right, so discussion of design at Country Club Lane, intersection with Albansstable Road.
I talked with Kenny Masters about it, and he had not heard anything from his engineer, so I asked him if he would contact him and find out how far along they are in doing those field locations that I had discussed with the engineer, and he said that he would. I have not heard from Kenny since the time when I spoke with him, which was last week, so I'll just have to keep on top of it and find out if he has the information yet.
Yeah, and I was hoping that you could go out with Charlie when he goes out to look at that spot?
Yes, absolutely.
And then Dennis is the planning board representative. It's an interesting project, and it'll, you know, it'll introduce you to how like the Mashpee community kind of works cooperatively with the planning board.
I'm eager for every opportunity to get up close and personal with the Mashpee community, for sure.
I'd like to see the, the working plan from his engineer before we do that.
Certainly.
As soon as we get it, then I'll be sure to let everybody know.
Great.
Any update on the performance bonds for Peter Hopple and Anne Brown Road, or are they...
I went out to Balfour, which is the subject of the Hopple security, and that road looks to be in pretty good shape to me. Now, there was a letter I had written back in 2008, was it? It had to do with some bounding and, and the shoulder work and so forth at that time. The shoulders are certainly stable, there was no evidence of any buildup on the road pavement. I know we've had a lot of rain recently, so that may have washed some down into the drainage structures, I don't know, but it was clean. The only thing that's left would be to just verify that the bounds were put there that was supposed to be. So, I will be out here tomorrow morning, I've got to go down to Aquway Highlands and review So I will be out here tomorrow morning. I've got to go down to Aquay Highlands and review some construction down there. So I'll swing by again and see if I can notice any bounds. If I can't, I think Chris Costa's office may have done the bounding on that, so I'll check in with them.
Okay. And the Amy Brown Road, I think that one's closed?
Yes.
That one's closed. So we can take that off the agenda?
Yes.
There was nothing else to. I think I already did the chairman's report. With the introduction of our new town planner, um, report on status of Greenway project. So I, I asked Maria in the planning department to reserve a room next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth at six PM for a subcommittee meeting on the Quashnet River Bridge, footbridge. So if you're available, please come.
At six?
Yeah. Cause you, yeah, you guys don't have a meeting.
It was last week.
Right. I missed that. Um, I had a terrible cold, so I didn't set the meeting. But you can come.
Absolutely.
Meet the Quashnet River Footbridge Subcommittee Working Group.
Fantastic.
That's next Wednesday?
Yeah, at six. And so I get it, Maria reserved the room, so I get to do an agenda and send it out to everybody. So there's that. Let's see. Report from design review.
Uh, design review, we just had a sign at the gas station, the mobile gas at the Rotary. And other than a few minor issues and a rheostat for the lighting because they're required, they want to change it from this to this.
Oh, I see. So it's digital?
All right.
And plus a few alterations at the islands and there's some things that are a little off, but. So we, if the rheostat will get that within, the requirement is a hundred.
Hundred lumens per square foot.
Yeah, hundred lumens per square foot. And they don't know what it is.
Oh, okay.
So they're gonna put a rheostat in there and.
The rheostat will allow, so at night if it's too bright, you can dim it with a rheostat switch.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's just gonna be the price of the regular gas now rather than, given the price of all the gas.
We're going modern. Ooh.
And they're going, uh, which is, well, I shouldn't say, I was gonna say hard, but they're going red, white and blue. Everything within the station is going to be like a red or white or blue. So, very patriotic, I guess.
Yeah.
So that was, and that was the only thing on the agenda. And for plan review, I think.
But, um, so plan review, Mashpee Commons team had preliminary plan approval of a new ten residential unit building. The fire chief expressed some concern about the modular design of the building and just in their preliminary inspections of the building, but I don't know if they have any. He had no recourse to deny the proposal and was subsequently approved unanimously by the committee.
Now, is that under their Chapter forty B?
Uh, this, I believe, is the final building under the Chapter forty B project of Mashpee Commons. Everything else I don't believe will be subject to Chapter forty B because of cost.
Okay. All right. Community Preservation Committee, no meeting. Environmental Oversight Committee?
Uh, I missed that meeting. I was, had an illness.
Something about the plastic bags ban? No? Going on, is that going into effect?
Oh, yeah, it is in effect.
It's in effect now? All right. All right. Cause I got some.
Shopping?
Well, I got all these emails and I'm like, is that new? It must have been an email reminder.
It's in effect, both in Roche Brothers and Stop and Shop.
Stop and Shop, you put one more thing in the bag, you're picking up on the rips.
I'll have to get some planning board tote bags.
Yeah, when you planning board tote bags.
In Roche Brothers, now their bags are really good.
Yeah, they're, yeah, that's all right.
Yeah. Because my wife shops in both, you know, she's looking for the bargains and.
Recycle that paper, folks.
In both, yeah. And of course, we have our own totes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bags.
I got like a slew of emails. I guess they were reminders. I don't know.
Yeah, the, the only thing with the plastic bags, if you have a dog, you kind of miss the bags, you know?
See, now there'll be a new business for people selling, who go to the grocery store to buy just the plastic bags.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
Because people use.
Does the bylaw allow them to be sold at retail?
Um, I think if you relabeled it.
Gotcha.
Has to be, has to be able to be reused.
Does it regulate the material? Could regulate the material?
Yeah.
Either way, I haven't looked into it.
You can buy, you can buy a thicker plastic bag for ten cents.
Oh, yeah.
It's very interesting.
A re, if, and that makes it reusable.
That's right.
Another fun fact about me, I spent a year on plastic bags in Brookline, Mass. So I'm, I'm very knowledgeable about the plastic bag ban experience if anyone has questions.
Did they, did they end up banning plastic?
They tried to ban all plastic, all plastic, um, all petrochemical plastic products numbered one through six. So that includes polystyrene, polyethylene, polypropylene, which is what, you know, you normally get for deli containers at both retail and for food service establishments. So it would be completely compostable and recyclable. It didn't pass during my tenure there. Um, the implications were just hard to quantify and that was what I was working on.
Oh.
Yeah, I think that would be a very difficult thing. Plastics are a way of life today.
The big question is impact. If you're banning, is there, is there truly impact? I think that's probably not a discussion for this time on the board.
Yeah. Well, the thin bags are the things, they're killing a lot of animals.
Marine animals.
And the environment.
Right. And we are a peninsula out in the ocean, so.
Yeah.
If anybody should ban them.
Yeah, but they put plastic bag in because we were killing too many trees. Now, what are we gonna kill trees, just not use the plastic?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring you in some reusable totes, sir.
I can't have things. I don't like them. No, remember, oh, we gotta cut the trees down. We gotta go to plastic. Now it's.
You need a basket. You have to carry a basket.
I've seen people with woven baskets.
Not to continue the deviation, but there's some wonderful compostable plastics available on the market.
There you go.
We're gonna have to get some for Dennis.
Definitely.
I'll bring some in next planning board meeting. I have some at home.
And trees are a renewable natural resource.
They can be. They can be. It's true. I think they're better at it now than they ever have been. MMR. Okay. Uh, hey, Cape Cod Commission, any news?
Uh, tomorrow we have a meeting for the public hearing on the zoning changes.
Is that for the GIZ?
For the growth incentive.
Zone. So it's how to create a growth incentive zone, right?
Correct.
Right. Any big changes or is it just housekeeping?
Not that I'm, yeah, it's, it's not a lot of big changes, no.
I heard it was just housekeeping.
Yes.
Kinda avoiding confusion.
Very minimal.
Yeah. All right. And are they doing a search for the executive director or?
No, they've named the intern, um, Miss Christine.
And the Tori?
I believe so, yes.
Was she named?
She's on, yeah, she was one of the top people there. Um, and she was named the intern.
Okay.
Right when he stepped out, well, when he presented to the commission, um, she was the choice.
That's great.
She's supposed to be providing the annual report tomorrow.
Is she gonna do the tour for all the towns or?
Uh, you can ask.
You can ask?
If you.
Invite her. Invite her to come in.
All right.
All right. Um, anyways, um, this correspondence. Anybody have any comments or questions? There should be a January discharge monitoring report soon.
I have a question. All these monitoring reports.
Yeah?
Do we do Mashpee Commons? How come we never hear reports? I thought we used to, but. John, didn't we used to get reports from Mashpee Common, their subject?
I don't recall, Dennis, to be honest with you.
I was wondering why we never did, you know, cause they have them on like these.
Yeah, well, I, I thought, uh, when I was in Winchime, I was a trustee there for a while and I was getting reports from the state and I thought there were eight, uh, treatment plants in Mashpee.
Okay.
The Mashpee Commons was one of them, right?
Yeah. And, you know, Winchime is one and South Cape Village is another one and I get which, Southport.
I know that you did get reports on Winchime for.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I don't know what happened. We probably should get reports on all eight.
Yeah, just to see how they function.
Yeah, if we're tracking one, why are we picking on one?
Right. That's what I was thinking that day. Say Mashpee Common and that thing is right near the river.
I, I wonder if what happened was Tom was watching over them and this one had so many outliers, he started, we asked him to put it on the agenda regularly.
That might be.
I think I remember that. But next week, we'll ask Tom.
Now, they've been on the agenda for a long time, even if they have on the board. And that was, that was mandatory. They had to give us reports to make sure they were meeting that hour five percent.
Right.
That's really ten percent from the state.
But that's a good comment. Well, I'll follow up with Tom next week on that.
Yeah, I, I think we should probably periodically look at all eight.
Yeah, that's, that'll happen, you know?
Yeah.
All right. No waterways? Any additional topics?
Just a report for me, Mary. Just to say that I've made three drainage inspections down to Blue Castle Development at Aquay Highlands Project. I'll be out there tomorrow morning. They've got some additional basins out there. Mr. Moran is not the one who's putting them in. He had hired someone else to do it, which is probably good because now it's getting done.
Okay.
But I'm not sure, once the structures are in, I think that's all this particular contractor's involvement is. And I'm not sure what will take place after that. I'll find out a little bit more tomorrow.
I noticed the one that's closest to the street and that sewer thing, well, way below grade. Is that how it goes in?
Yes, because there's gonna be a, you're talking about next to the grass?
Yeah, the one that.
There is a drainage area that's right there.
Oh, so that drains it.
And that's set pretty close to the bottom of it, Dennis.
Yeah. Right. You know, they have a cover on it and they go, wow, that's like three feet below the actual grade of the street or two feet.
Well, they actually haven't set any grades for the road at all yet, so it's just rough. Yeah.
All right.
All right, I'd accept a motion.
I make a motion, you adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.